There it is. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters. There have been previous discussions on these issues earlier in either meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the acting superintendent, her staff, or through outside research. Okay, so we'll go on to agenda item 1.05. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Okay, is there a second? Do I have to do that part? Okay. Is there, is there a second? Well, we'll just move into it. All right. All in favor say aye, or let's raise our hands for, on Zoom, that's probably easier, one, two, three, four, and five. Okay, the agenda item is passed by two zero, and the agenda is approved. Moving on to agenda item 2.01, fund balance discussion. And so can I pass it on, Ms. Kim Whitworth? You want to just tackle that? All right.
Yes, Keith, can I share screen, please?
Yes, ma'am, you should be good.
Okay. Here we go. So, we know that the use of fund balance is something that has to be taken into consideration when we're, when we're, when we're making decisions about the budget. And we have to have a fund balance for a number of reasons, to be physically responsible and all that. We also have policy 6022 that outlines what we have to do in terms of fund balance. So the fund balance must be 5% of projected revenue plus $1,115,000. So there is another piece in here, and Brenda might need to explain this when I'm done, but it says the 1,115,000 set aside and designated in fund balance to cover costs of specific items removed from the general fund budget during the 2018-19 budget extension process. So I'm, I'm, what I'm not sure is if that's just something that we've continued to do, or if we need to update our policy, or what's going on there. So I'm going to leave that to Brenda to explain when we get to the end of this. Um, 5% of our budget revenue is $5,025,001.50. Plus, the $1,115,000 that's part of the policy, that 5% plus, that 1 million plus, is $6,140,201. That's what we should have in our fund balance for our policy. We are expecting a fund, our fund balance to be $14,124,769 by the end of this school year, which is about 14.05% of our projected revenue. This is more than what the policy says we need to have in our fund balance. If we keep $6,140,201.50 in the fund balance per the policy, we have $7,984,567.50 above and beyond what's in there. If we can keep, if we can use up to $7 million of the fund balance to help mitigate the loss of levy dollars, we will still have the money required by policy, and we will not have to have a reduction in force. We are respectfully asking the board to approve the use of up to $7 million to help balance the budget. And I emailed this to all of you a little, a little bit ago, so you should have that in front of you as well, if you need to go back. So at this time, I'm going to ask if there are questions.
I'll go. That's okay. Um, so yes, it has been just a little bit of time, uh, as we've been getting all of this. So for clarification, and also we have an audience, and this is for our community, and I'm going to go ahead and ask, uh, I'm going to repeat back as I understand it, and I would like you to clarify if I'm incorrect or not, if that makes sense, Kim.
Yes.
And then Brenda, any clarification on that as well? So basically, we need to have a hair over $6 million in our minute, our, our fund balance minimum amount is the $6,140,201.50. If we have, by the end of the year, the 14 million and change, 14,124,769, and we use the, the difference of that, the 7.9 million, basically, that will make up the remaining amount that we need to be able to have a balanced budget for what we would have in lost levy dollars, and we would not be, need to do any reduction in force of any kind. So therefore, we would not need to vote on what our resolution was on in our last board meeting. That would not even be, that would be a moot point.
Correct. Brenda, more detail?
Um, no, that, that is correct. Essentially, if we can spend up to $7 million in fund balance, the resolution will not have to be passed this evening. If, um, there's any variation to that, then we would respectfully request that, uh, that the resolution be passed.
Can I ask a question? Uh, that's a follow-up. Then, we're expecting that the 14,124,769 will be in our fund balance, or will be the balance of our fund balance, uh, by the end of this year. What factors would change that, make it more or less, or could affect that?
The only thing that would impact it is if we have any additional unexpected costs this year. But I believe when we did the budget extension a few weeks ago, all of those factors were built into the budget extension. Predominantly, the extra resources in fund balance are a result of the enrollment stabilization that we received at the end of last year, and the enrollment stabilization that we are yet to receive this year.
I feel like this is a snowball of questions, so that leads into the next one. You said this, and I'm looking at the email as well from Kim. It says that we're expecting that to be the fund balance by the end of this school year. So, excuse me. By the end of this school year, not by the end of our fiscal year. So this, we're saying by the end of June?
No, we're saying by the, it's supposed to be fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
By the end, sorry, end of the fiscal year. Yeah, if, by the end of the fiscal year, meaning by August 31st, when we close the books, this is what we're expecting to have in fund balance.
So we're basically at the end of April, so we're looking at May, June, July, and all of August. This is a four-month timeframe. We're not going to be in session for much of that, because we have about one more month left until school is out. What other major expected costs could come up in the meantime? Repair issues that are unaccounted for, or is most of that planned out? Maybe that's a Victor question, but that's, I'm just basically trying to say, what is unforeseen that could affect this, that would need us to do this? Because what I don't want to do is get ourselves into a pinch, so that then we have to look at pulling out this list, which I don't think is a good idea. But that's just my opinion right now. But what would be even worse was having to do this literally at the beginning of the school year. This would be horrible, horrible timeframe. And so I'm trying to make sure that we don't have any unexpected things that are going to cost us. Hey, oh, oops, this was a $3 million thing that we did not think about. Is there anything else that would happen in the next four months between now and end of fiscal year?
I believe that the $984,000 that it will still be above the $7 million will cover those unexpected, I don't, I don't know of any larger unexpected costs. Like I said, when we built in the budget extension a few weeks ago, we did a lot of, um, a lot of calculating to determine that the, the budget was pretty sound at that point.
Victor, do we have any, anything coming up in, in things that capital project money that's left over won't cover? Or are we looking at pretty much everything's ready to go?
That's, that's a good question. That's exactly what I was going to say. Yeah. Director Campbell, we have, everything we've planned for, for summer work is all coming from capital. If there are things that happen outside of our scope, that we would cover it under capital.
So that fund is already set aside for those projects?
That is correct, but yeah.
Money, okay.
That, well, yeah, it's still projects that we're working on, that we just schedule outside of the school year when kids are gone.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Absolutely.
So I want, I'm hoping to, oh.
Oh, Director Johnson.
Thank you. So I'm hoping to do the same thing, which is just to, um, state my understanding of this email and where we're at. I, I'm hoping that's helpful. So, um, I think it is pretty, it's, it's clear, and I'm, and I'm thankful that it is now stated. I wish it, I wish this would have been stated at the last board meeting, that if this money, this potential expense is approved, then there's no need for reduction in force. Um, but I want to make sure I understand correctly is that even with the $7 million, there is no change needed from the board to any type of policy. Our policy stays in place. We remain in compliance with our policy. And then that the $7 million is a potential expense, and not anything that has already been set forth that will be spent. So theoretically, if nothing came up, that money would still be there in the next fiscal year. Is that correct?
No, the $7 million would, it would essentially be a budget that the expenditures exceed the revenues by up to $7 million. So in other words, what we're doing is getting board approval to move forward as we build the budget, knowing that, um, as we continue to look at further reductions, that the board would still adopt a budget in August that utilized up to $7 million of fund balance. I also wanted to add the caveat that, um, two months after the budget is adopted, if we go out for a levy and the levy passes, that $7 million would then come from the levy and not fund balance.
Thank you.
Directors, any other questions? Director Whitfield?
Just, are we just specifically talking about the fund balance? Are we going to, at this point, can we talk about the resolution that fits in the equation? Are we going to do that separately?
Uh, that is agenda item 2.02. So if we're done here on the discussion of fund balance, all right, we can move on to the next agenda item.
Do we need to have a motion saying that we can use up to $7 million?
That's in the business section.
Okay.
Thank you, Brenda. Okay, any other questions for Kim or Brenda or Vic? Okay, so we'll go on to agenda item 2.02, at a reduction in force discussion. And Kim, I'll hand it over to you as well.
So as we are looking at, um, having our staffing reflect our normal year typical budgeting and staffing process, which was different than what it was in COVID. In COVID, we had six feet of space between students to start with, went down to three. But at the time, we started with, we, if we have six feet of distance between students, then we can only have a certain number of kids in a classroom, which meant that our typical classroom load was not going to work, and we had to split kids up, which means we had to hire more teachers. So in going back to a model where we don't have to have six foot and three foot distance, we don't have to have as many custodial staff, or some of the other things that we did during COVID to mitigate possible exposure and, and all of that stuff. Um, we were anticipating that we were going to have to, to cut staffing, to riff staff, especially in particular, certificated staff and classified staff, also some custodial staff. Um, as we're looking at our certificated staffing, what we're seeing is the attrition is really kind of taking care of that. There are some, some issues in secondary where you have people who can teach certain things, and we're, we're still trying to look at what people are certified to teach, what openings we're going to possibly have. We know that we have people with K-8 endorsements, and so they can teach, if they're in middle school, they could teach elementary. There are some moves that we can make to make sure that we're going to be able to keep our staff. So if what we're looking at is, is right now, if, if we have the $7 million fund balance, we have no need to riff staff. We might be one or two over, and we're going to work with MEA. We have some ideas about how to make sure that these are people that have full contracts, all of their benefits, and, and all of that stuff. The riff comes in potentially, if the $7 million from fund balance isn't available to us, and then we have to start looking at that list of cuts. And along with some of those items on that list of cuts, comes accompanying staff members. So if we're going to, if we're going to take money from something that requires two or three staff members, that would be two or three staff members hypothetically, that would be two or three staff members that we no longer need. So this is where, what we're saying is, we're not asking for $7 million in fund balance to not riff staff. We have no need to riff staff. We need the $7 million for some of the other projects and initiatives that we have happening, so that we can continue to maintain the staff that goes with those programs and those initiatives. Does that make sense?
Questions?
I have a comment, if I may. So, um, that, that all makes sense, Kim, and, and I appreciate it. And in one place where I just want to pause, and I think this comes from looking at the labor market and, um, looking at how America is getting back to work after a pandemic that affected everybody and every industry. And I'm, I've heard tonight, and I heard at our last board meeting and in budget conversations, this discussion of we're, we're trying to get back to normal, or we are going back from a normal model of our staffing and where people are at, or where people are needed, based on our enrollment and that sort of thing. And I, and I really want to caution this district that while we are moving out of the pandemic, there are a lot of things that changed. And there are, there were some things that changed for the good during the pandemic, like us being able to be here via Zoom. But that employers are really going to need to rethink the way that they have their employees in, in their companies, in their organizations. And that supporting those people in new and different ways is really important. So, um, our last meeting with the mayor and talking about, um, the city's sort of vision statement, this is something I shared with Director Pompous. I, I, that night had trouble sleeping. I got onto this role of really thinking about my hopeful vision for this district. And, and the phrase that I came up with is growing together. So I think it, it provides us an opportunity to think about, you know, being really polarized right now and how we come together. Keeping everybody who is part of this organization together and supported, and moving together in a new way, um, that, that puts us all on a better course, and, and especially for our students. And I also want to say that, um, Director Whitfield, something in your bio really resonated with me. There's on your, on the district website, your bio says, "When teachers are supported, students are supported." And, and I, that really just, that struck a chord and, and helped me think about all of this editing and reduction in force that we're going through. It just, message from your vocational counselor. Let's, let's, while we, you know, know that, yes, some things are getting back to normal, I think we can also think of it as the new normal, where everybody is better off. Thanks for letting me ramble.
Want to, to applaud that. We, we can do better than getting back to normal. I agree completely.
Any other questions, comments?
Oh, I had a question. So with the resolution, I know, now this, I'm just kind of, I know probably like 60% of this. So we're required by the teacher's contract to provide notification that there could be a reduction in force, and that we need to have that filed or in place to allow that to happen sometime in the, we need to have that mechanism in place. And if we employ that, does that mean we have to make the decision for the, the changes prior to, I believe it was the May 31st? Or does employing that mechanism allow us to make that decision in the, at a later time?
I know that Jeff and Dan are here, and so I'm going to punt to them in just a second, but there is a really short turnaround. If we don't have the benefit of having the $7 million from fund balance, we have some other decisions to make, and I think we have like two days or something like that to get to it, because there's a certain amount of time where we have to notify MEA, and then we have to make those changes. And so that's where it starts getting really, really tricky. Uh, Dan, Jeff, anything else to add?
Sure. Um, the statutory deadline for notifying, um, certificated staff of adverse impact on their employment is May 15th. This year, because May 15th falls on a Sunday, that date is actually May 13th. We would have to notify MEA of intent to do a reduction in force two weeks prior to that. That would be this Friday, April 29th. Once, uh, May 13th passes, and we haven't issued riff notices, we have to issue every one of our continuing contract employees a contract for next year. So, um, yeah, there, there's a very short timeline at this point for getting all this done. And in addition to that, I'd say, between April 29th and May 13th, when the notices have to be actually in the teacher's hands, there's a tremendous amount of work to do to figure out, um, who would be subject to reduction in force, and all the mechanisms that need to be in place to execute that. Does that make sense?
Well, for me, I understand about the mechanism and, and the timeline, but does the decision for those, um, potentially affected, does that have to be made by that, by that, that time also? So by the, the 29th to be, to have a two-week lead? Do we have to identify the employees and give them the notice? Or do we just have to employ that, uh, that mechanism, that notice?
We would have to supply notice generally to the association by this Friday. And by May 13th, we will have had to identify the staff who are going to be reduced to the force, and provided them written notice of that fact by the close of business on May 13th. That's, that's the timeframe we have to operate under.
It seemed during COVID, we, we needed to employ it, and then we had the ability to use it, as an option, or, you know, all the changes that were going on. So that, I didn't realize that they, both of those had to be completed so, so soon. My, um, you know, the one thing I've learned on the board is we always get, things happen unexpectedly, expenses and, um, items that we don't plan for. Um, I would, this is just my own personal opinion, I would like to have that enacted for some employees that we could identify, uh, for, for the potential, or at least to have. So if, if we notify them, then it doesn't take effect. So the, actually, they're going to be hired on for the following year. But we will, this is where I get messed up with the notification and levy. So if we, if we provide the, the riff, it will be effective first the school year?
That's correct. If we provide the notice of reduction in force to employ, that is for the succeeding school year. It means we have the right to, uh, terminate the contract for the succeeding year. So they would be employed through the end of this year.
Okay. Thank you.
To Director Whitfield's, uh, point, do we, if we pass the consideration of reduction in fund balance, is it necessary to pass resolution 7-2022? Okay. So just to clarify, Sue.
And I just want to just to acknowledge and thank Brenda and Jeff and Dan. They have been number crunching and looking at staffing and, like, mathematically, how many students, how many teachers do we need? And then looking at our schools and their programs and their unique, um, things that are happening, and realizing that actually we need more than what we mathematically need. So we're staffing more than the mathematic model. Um, and I know that, I think if there is a large number that we might be anticipating, having this resolution would be important. We believe that we can absorb any staff member who might not have a really specific position in a classroom in another way. The stress that this causes to students and staff and families and everybody is just really, really difficult. I, I, I started teaching in the, in the mid-'90s, I think, oh my gosh, I think it was the mid-'90s. And we were going through riffs that were seven years deep. So people who'd been teaching in schools for seven years were being riffed. And we were all scattered, trying to find jobs all over, and, and applying for a job. And there'd be, you know, 50 applicants, and, and it was a very stressful time. And the impact of that on schools and districts and cultures took a long time to mitigate. So financially, I feel like we have been incredibly conservative and prudent about what we can do. Then I think now it's time to really think about our culture and, um, the, the value that we place on our, on our staff. And it's just not necessary to put them through this. If we thought for a second, I, I mean, yes, we, we could have, I don't know, a building collapse with no kids in it, nobody in it, right? Something could happen unforeseeably, but we have looked at everything, and we're not anticipating anything at this time. And I don't believe that the impact of passing this resolution and going through all of that process is worth it at this time. And, and we have rerun those numbers, and we've looked at the schools, and we've done all of that. And all three of those people are incredibly skilled and knowledgeable about their field and about this work. And so I feel very confident in supporting this decision.
Um, Kim, I appreciate you saying that. As a teacher myself, I've been on riff lists before. It's a scary thing. These are families that we're affecting. These are Monroe families. Many of these teachers are parents of our own kids as well. And, um, I think that that's something that, I appreciate your heart, because just the approval of this list puts a lot of unneeded stress in a district that has already been stretched beyond its limits. We have been pulled past the breaking point multiple times in the last two years, and it is exhausting. We don't need to do it unnecessarily beyond anymore. And I think that, um, I appreciate that we have this opportunity. I think that we've saved a rainy day fund, an emergency fund, and that's, the questions I'm asking is, short of an act of God, in the next four months, you know, if we don't see anything that's gaping hole, as you guys have combed through the budget over and over and over again, then we have the money for this so that we don't have to unnecessarily disrupt families, which disrupt students, which disrupts our community. And honestly, at the end of it, it doesn't put faith in our community again anyway. When we're looking to say, hey, we want you to entrust us with tax dollars to do what's right for the kids, we're working on building trust with our community, and I think this is an, an important way that we can do that, and valuing our teachers over them. Well, let's just hang on to this money just in case. Um, I do have a question about the resolution, since we're talking about the reduction in force right now. The 3.02 consideration of the resolution, it's resolution number seven for 722. In our board meeting from the 18th in April of last year, that same resolution was resolution number six for 2022. Is the, I was combing through it, and the only difference I'm reading is the date. Is that, is that correct? That if we That if we were to pass it, the only difference that's between the resolutions from last meeting and this meeting. Is the date or is there any other language in there that I'm missing? I'm not seeing any, but I need help with that.
The, the only thing that was changed, Jeremiah, was the date because um, resolution number six. Twenty twenty two was um, not passed.
Okay.
So we took action on it and we didn't pass it, so we have to move on to another resolution number.
And that's the only edit change on there was the date. So, okay, that was what I was wanting to double check. And so that means then if we approve business item three point zero one of reducing our fund balance, then we do not have to approve three point zero two. That becomes unnecessary. Thank you. And Kim, thank you for the value that you put on our employees and the staff here. It means a lot, says a lot.
Uh, I wanted to ask a question. No, I'm in agreement with Director Campbell and Acting Superintendent Whitworth. But I'm, I am so cautious. I've been through a recession and uh, two thousand eight. So I would, I'd like. Some input from either Jeff or Dan about. Their position as, as HR, how that affects. For the decisions that they, they bring into play, um, or just your, your advice. Just some feedback from, because this is all new, we're, we're going through these. This current state, we've been through. You know, COVID and all those changes. So what would be? What would be your comments regarding this?
Well, as it pertains to this conversation um, of whether or not we need to entertain the idea of RIFs. We're in a pretty good spot. Um, a week ago. Um, I let you know that I'd be studying this carefully and I did, I looked into it closely and two things happened. One. Uh, we were already close at that point. We're already close that we could fairly confidence, confidently say we don't need RIFs. Since that time, four resignations or separations, I think one of them might have been a retirement have, have come in. So that improved our situation. We also took a hard look at the high school cuts. Uh, Brenda and I worked. Uh, with the high school principal, we looked closely at what we, what would be happening to class size. All things considered, considering our resource classes, considering our EL classes, considering CTE programs, all programs. And we reduced those projected cuts um, to uh, by, by three. So we're actually in a. A position where we're seven, a change of seven happened since last week, um, just by, by the work that we did. So we actually have more resignations and retirements already right now. We have. Uh, three more than our projected cuts are, and it's only April. So we know from experience and, and Jeff. Um, a- all of us know that it's only April, more resignations and retirements and separations are going to come. Hiring season is just starting. Um, there's just some natural attrition that always happens um, for a school district. So we're, we're in a good spot right now. Um, that even if we decided, wait, we need to reduce uh, two or three more positions. Um, we'd be able to do so without riffing. We'd be able to handle that through attrition. And even if we did have. Um, you know, a little bit extra, um, we have, there's, there's plenty of need in the district that we'd be able to sign to, but it's just. I'm, I'm extremely confident that that's not going to happen. Uh, we just don't need, and, and even if it did. Because of the timeline, we would only have till May thirteenth. So if something catastrophic happened and changed, it would have to happen in the next. Two weeks for us to even know that, because once May thirteenth goes by, we can't riff anyway, even if the board is authorized. So. I just don't see any reason to go down this road, um, because it's just not necessary.
Jeff, you have anything to add?
Um, well, I guess only that I think uh, given this unique set of circumstances. You, uh, if the levy, if the levy is rerun in November and if it passes. I think that this will, in retrospect, look like a brilliant strategy. To maintain the current instructional programs um, to. Hopefully lessen anxiety in the organization and to be able to move through the spring and into the summer with a sense of confidence about next year. Um, I think I agree with Dan. I think uh, given. What we're, we've currently determined, we're going to allocate to the buildings for certified staffing and the staff we already have. And then that, what we know about resignations and retirements and how relatively when it comes to that. There will be more certainly in May, June and July, we know that. Um, and I guess the other added thing is that um, there's a pretty significant teacher shortage right now. And I don't think. When we, if we riff unnecessarily. Or when, when we have other choices, I think it, it sends a message to teachers. And uh, there are a lot of places they can go shop for jobs right now, and I think we need to be really thoughtful about that as well. Um, I think uh, in terms of fund balance strategies, I've. Um, seen much larger districts operate in situations like this on much thinner margins and, and survive. So I think. Um, I think there's every good reason uh, to be hopeful about this, I guess is my perspective.
I like that part about hindsight twenty twenty, brilliant strategy, something like that. Yeah, that was, thank you.
Let's put our money where our mouth is and value our teachers rather than our budget balance. Just to say it bluntly.
Well, I appreciate Jeff and Dan's perspective on, on the thing. It's. You know, being a director is so much responsibility and the weight is so great. You know, after the last riff, I ran into a custodian and asked him how he's doing. Hey, how's it going? Well, I lost my job because of that riff. And I asked, well, you know, with your income and stuff, are you doing? Well, with um, unemployment, we're doing okay. And I told him, I said, you know what? I was. I was one of the people that made that decision. That uh. That actually affected your job. And you know, that's, it's a heavy responsibility and you think of that. That husband or wife and the children. And so it is uh, the questions I ask are my. As a community leader and responsibility to the community, but uh. You know, I am total uh, supporter of the teachers and I want to support them for the, the long term. And we want to. We want to keep, we got great teachers. We're doing great things for kids and. So that's my piece.
Anyone else, questions, comments?
Just one last thing. If we do approve three point zero one, we don't even have to. Uh, motion for the approval of three point zero two, because if we do motion for it, it just dies.
Okay. All right, I just want to say thank you so much, uh, Brenda, Jeff and Daniel for going back to the drawing board. Working so intentionally and intensely this past week and. You know, making the magic happen. It's like Disneyland. Um, but really partnering on creating a culture of. Of grace, I think, and, and growth, Sarah, and growth, right? I really. Um, appreciate being part of that and uh, thank you again for. For doing all of that work. I know that that wasn't easy and the conversations we were having last week were not easy either. So thank you so much for, for doing all of that and putting this information before us and saying it. On repeat so that it is very clear and it's out loud and I appreciate all of that. Okay, any other questions, comments? Perfect. Okay, we will move on to agenda item three point zero one, consideration of reduction in fund balance. Is there a motion?
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approved the reduction in fund balance of up to seven million dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approved the reduction in fund balance of up to seven million dollars. Discussion. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item three point zero two, is there a motion? Agenda item three point zero two, is there a motion? I'm going to do it three times just in case. Agenda item three point zero two, is there a motion? Okay, we will go on to agenda item three point zero three, consideration of the purchase of Chromebook, Chromebooks for S V E C. Is there a motion?
I move that Monroe School District. Approved. Sorry, didn't come up. Approved the purchase of Chromebooks for Sky Valley Education Center for the amount of forty five thousand four hundred and fifty two dollars and seventy two cents plus tax.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approved the purchase Chromebooks for Sky Valley Education Center for forty five thousand seven hundred and fifty two dollars and seventy two cents. Plus tax discussion.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Director Johnson.
Um, I, I do not know the process for how these um, bids are put together. And so I'm just hoping for some more information about that. If um, how it came to be, you know, what the process is. Are there, are there different bids that come from different companies and how are those solicited? Um, and then my last question will just be if, if this, if we, if the recommendation to the board is that this is the best price that we can get. And I'm asking in the interest of, you know, we're on a spending freeze and we are being cautious about money. Um, so those are my questions.
Victor, can you take this one and talk about what you and Keith have done? And I know Keith is here as well.
Yeah, I can hear starter Keith if you'd rather talk about, about what we do.
Sure, sure. I'm, I'm happy to, Vic. I'm happy to. Yeah. Unless you, unless you want to leave, sir.
No, you're good.
Okay, great. So um, Director Johnson, the way it works is so because we, our school district. We um, per board policy, uh, for certain dollar amounts, we are required to get board approval to spend funds. Okay? Uh, in this particular instance, um, it exceeded the price of forty thousand dollars. So we had to get quotes. Um, and I actually have three quotes that I could share on the screen with you, or two other quotes that I could share on the screen with you if you needed. Um, to show uh, that this is indeed the best price of the three resellers that we normally purchase through. Part of, uh, the other part of the purchasing process is when you buy um, devices, if you spend so much in a cert. In a, in a fiscal year on devices. Unless you want to go out for a public bid or a uh, request for quote. With, you know, official documents like in the paper and all that good stuff, um, you don't have to do that if you buy off. Uh, various state contracts. Those contracts include like with Sipsey State contracts. Tips is another one and there's also the NCPA, which is more of a national contract. And so what we do when we procure those quotes is I actually ask for. Uh, them to put the contract number that they're referencing on their quote. Um, and so what that does is that ensures that we, that keeps us um. Nice and legal and keeps our state auditors happy because they require that to keep us in their good graces, of course, and that puts a smile on Brenda's face, of course. Um, and then the other part of that too is, um, you know, sometimes uh. People don't understand that unfortunately, we can't just go to Walmart or go to Amazon and purchase things like that because. Uh, one, a lot of the times, uh, those resellers um, that are on there are in fact resellers and they are what we call gray market devices. So, you know, they may have fallen off a truck someplace or something like that and they can't supply the quantity or the pricing. And the manufacturer won't honor the warranty on that. So it's super important uh, to understand that um, concept. I actually spoke with a community member this week. Uh, she was very helpful and, and giving me some information. I was able to follow up on that. And I even followed up with uh, the vendor Acer uh, to confirm um, some of the information that I was given. And uh, sure enough, uh, that, if we had tried to procure devices, say from Amazon or something like that. The warranties wouldn't have been honored uh, because of that. So, you know, again, this is a, a full, and I, I hope I'm not going too far in the weeds for you, but. It seemed like you wanted some real clarity and I'm, I'm hoping to provide that for you and I, I'm hoping I'm doing that. Is that, is that kind of what you're looking for?
That's exactly what I'm looking for. So a lot of my job is learning how to do other people's jobs.
Sure.
Well, that's where my questions end up, end up like, and so I, I really appreciate the concise and um, clear explanation. And hopefully not, and we could go further into the weeds. I can super nerd out about this stuff. Oh, I'm, I might have follow up questions just because I'm, I'm curious and I.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And Sarah, there's one more thing. And Keith, I, I'm not sure where this money is coming from, but sometimes the money that we have, we have to use it. The device, whatever we're purchasing has to be delivered, services have to be delivered, objects and things have to be delivered before. I think it's August thirty days. First, right. So I'm not sure where the funding from this was coming from and if it had that requirement, but that's sometimes. Another piece that we have to consider. We might find a cheaper price and it comes in September twenty fifth and it's like, yep. It's not going to work for us because we have to have it before August.
And, and I want to compliment Keith too on the work we do when it comes to that. When we purchase, the warranties, as you probably know, are really incredibly important. Because even if one of our students should drop it the first day, you're looking at five hundred to six hundred, depending on the qua, the amount of the device. But also, as Keith said, you know, if we went to Amazon or like I said, oh wow, I found the same device. We don't know. For sure what that device is until it arrives where we have these um, warranties through Acer or the government bids. That give us that uh, assurance that whatever we're purchasing is going to come to us in great shape. Or if we need help putting them back together or restructuring them or adding software to match our, our school district, that's also really important to us.
And uh, one other thing I'd like to, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Vic.
No, I was just going to say again, you know, that's our job and, you know, so we know it. But again, you know, we love talking about our job, but at the same time, is it? You know, I don't know how much you, it's, it's like going to school to learn it all.
Yeah, um, anyway, I, I, I feel like we're, we're in a good place with this and I feel like this is, this is the, the right direction to move. I, I really wish we could get better pricing than what this is, you know, I. People who know me, who've worked with me on procurement, uh, over the years know that. I tend to kind of hold vendors' feet to the fire a little bit, um, because. Uh, when all is said and done, it is my job, uh, when we're doing procurement to ensure we're getting the best value we can. Uh, and spending our taxpayer money um, in the best possible way and making sure that I am being as fiscally responsible to our taxpayers as possible. That's super important, so. Okay.
Thanks. I just want to say thank you because with your in-depth explanations of why. We don't just go to Amazon and purchase, you're giving the community information. Because without all of that information and with the holes, there's just too much room to speculate and think that, okay, well, maybe we're not using the funds appropriately. Or we're not checking every avenue to make sure that we're saving money. So I think in building that relationship back up with the community and. Showing them that, hey, you know, we, we're trying to be responsible and do these things and here we're trying to be transparent. Um, I think that's really important and I really appreciate it. And that was the same question I was going to ask Sarah, so. You were just right on wavelength with me. The one thing I did want to clarify about this, it says um. In board docs with the budget impact, the funding source, it says that this is coming from Sky Valley's budget. So is this stuff that? Um, has already been allocated, the budget for Sky Valley that they're going to be using? Is this coming out of? General funding? What exactly is happening with the payment of this? Where is it coming from?
Since Sky Valley.
Oh, go ahead, Brenda.
Laura, Keith, since Sky Valley is an ALE, they are funded per pupil. And um, because of the nature of the program, Sky Valley controls all the revenue that they get. Less a small indirect that the district keeps. And Karen is very good. About monitoring her budget. And when we build, when I built the budget extension or when I build the budget. The assumption is always that Karen will spend all of her money. Sometimes, of course, she has carryover, but the assumption built into the budget is that she will spend it all. And so um, there's no. And so, um, there's no doubt in my mind that Karen has worked her numbers and knows that this falls within the realm of her budget.
Awesome, perfect, Brenda, that's a great explanation of that, so it's not coming out of anything else, these aren't extra dollars that we need to account for. It's already been done. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Uh, I had a comment and a perspective. Getting the, the Chromebooks for Sky Valley reminds me of, uh, a visit I did to Park Place. And we wandered into a classroom and a little boy was working, little boy, I don't know what his age was. Uh, was working on his Chromebook and, uh, doing some sort of task. And I asked him, I go, how's, how's the, how's the computer working though, so it's kind of, it's running kind of slow. And so what I wanted to tell him was, well, you know that our Chief Technology Officer, uh, got a bid. And the board approved three hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of about a thousand Chromebooks. That his team is going to update all of the software and that the programs that we pay for, that we approve. For the, the expenses every month. Those go into the programs that allow the, the machine to operate. So you could, so the machine works. But my response was, I think we're getting some new Chromebooks.
By that answer?
Wait, did he, Kim, what did you say, I'm sorry, you put out a little.
I was just teasing Director Whitfield, I just asked if he was impressed with, that, that we're getting new Chromebooks, I.
Well, I see what my middle schooler does to his and I'm not going to tell on him because this is, you know, shared and public and stuff. But I'm just saying, I'm really glad that there's a warranty on these Chromebooks. Um, any other questions, comments? Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, there I am. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Okay, and then the last but not least, agenda item four point zero one, it is five fifty-six P M and tonight's special meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.